Pause for a moment. Now, if you guys want to go ahead and come up, I have Terry Bennett, the CEO facilitator, and the 2025 participants that could be here this evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
You all look very professional.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, we work on that. Thank you for having us this evening and for taking a few moments for us to talk to you about CEO. This is the second year for CEO in Vigo County. It is a program that has been in the country, started in Eppingham actually, and it's throughout the country. There are seventy programs with almost a thousand students in it this year. With it being our second year, we had five students in it. We had twenty-nine applicants, but we ran into conflicts with the scheduling. And we've since worked those things out, so for next year, we have thirteen. We also had recently our trade show, if you got the emails that we were sending out, the invitations. That was last Monday. Thank you. You're assuming I know how to use this. There we go. As you can see, here's a picture of our ribbon cutting. We joined Sullivan County CEO. And together that made a trade show of eleven different businesses and eleven different booths. Very different businesses, different products and services. The convention center was full. We had probably, I'd say between a hundred and fifty to, you know, a hundred and seventy people come through to meet the students. It was actually business. They were there to talk and to pitch their business. And it was, they have had test customers and they have had the opportunity to be out in the community already, pitching their business and starting sales. But at the trade show, that was the real show. Each one of these booths are the Vigo County students. This is Gabe Reed. His business is Fallen Rome. And I'm gonna let each one of them, if you'd like, talk about those in a moment. This is Andrea Lee De Santos, and her business is Instant Glam. This is Jamison Miller. His business is Great Grease and Gunk Solutions. We have two members of the class who cannot be with us this evening, they have baseball. But Jamison, Jackson Stewart, his business is Clean Swing. And then Matthew Ewing, his business is Deluxe Touch Mobile Car Detailing. And we have a video. This class, you know, has so much that we do in each and every day, that it would be a long list for me to try and recall without saying or reading to you. So we have a video, we just wanted to kind of show you them in action. And then if there's any particular thing that you see in the video that you want to ask questions about, please feel free afterwards. Part of what you saw was the video of Jackson Stewart doing his thirty-second pitch. That was his submission to Midland Institute for the National Pitch Competition. Last week, we met at Sandbox, Sandbox Social. I was getting those two switched. And we watched a live feed, and he got national recognition for the program. Out of four hundred and sixty-eight students who submitted, he was in the top, top eighteen, top twelve. Yeah. And so, that's fantastic, especially when there's so many who are doing the exact same thing we're doing. They're just trying to stand out. And Jackson's was a wonderful pitch. Jackson does a golf club cleaning service. And so, it's mobile and he comes to you. And same thing with Matthew. Matthew is a mobile business where he comes to you and he does car detailing. So I'm gonna let these folks do the talking now, you've heard from me enough.
Wonderful.
All right, I would just first off like to say thank you guys for approving this program, so we have the opportunity to do the things we have done this year. It means a lot to me, and I think I speak for everyone else in this program when I say that. But, so, a little bit about my business, is I clean grease traps, kitchen hoods, and do, I want to get to a point where I can do HVAC for restaurants as well. It's something that's very needed here in Terre Haute, and I saw a demand, and so I went for it. And I don't think I would have probably gone for it if it wasn't for this program. So I'll let it move on to Gabe here, so he can talk a little about what he does.
My business is Fallen Rome. It is where I took Roman resilience and rounded it in Christian faith. And I decided I wanted to grow my faith with the Lord. And I decided I'm gonna make images and put scripture on clothes and help people grow their faith with God.
Hi, my name is Andrea Lee De Santos. I run Instant Glam. On Instant Glam, we do customized espresso nails, so by size and design. The whole point of this is that so people don't have to pay for insane amounts on nails. You can apply them yourself. All of our nails come with kits that you can apply them at home in the car, wherever you need to apply your nails at. And it's also a great gift for anyone that you would like to give, so that's where we stand with it.
So that's kind of a brief thirty-second pitch right there from each of them. What questions might you have for us? Because we're happy to talk about other things, but we'd like to see what areas you'd like to know more about.
I have to start with the grease trap question. What on earth attracted a high school kid to this very kind of gross, but also very, very needed? I have heard, by watching the internets many times, that those kind of gross businesses are the ones that will make you a millionaire one day. So talk to us about how that happened for you.
So I would like to say, what kind of started it for me was, you know, being a high school student. I've worked my fair share of different jobs. One of those was a fast food restaurant here in town. And throughout my time of working there, there was another company that were coming into it. And they did a mediocre job, but they just charged a crazy price for it. And I would always hear about it from the general manager and all the other managers, about how they were paying so much for something that was just so mediocre and like, it was, nobody was happy with it. And I would end up in there the next day scrubbing it down with my little wire brush. And I was like, man, I'm getting paid ten dollars an hour to do this. I could be making so much more. And so, that was kind of where my idea got into it. But going off kind of what you said earlier this year, I was telling Terry here that, you know it's getting bad when your future career was on an episode of Dirty Jobs. But now, it's something that's needed, and somebody's gotta go out there and do it. Because not only is it disgusting, but it's needed, because it is considered a fire hazard. And we have more restaurants in Terre Haute than we know what to do with. But do you guys have any other questions for us?
I wanted to let you know, there's a group called KIVA, K-I-V-A. And they make loans to people like you all around the country. I've been doing them for like seven, eight years now, in foreign countries even. But you're almost perfect for that. Once you get, you know, once you get your business, you know, kind of up and going and established and you want to expand, you want to go, you want to look at a KIVA.
All right, sounds great. Also, one thing I would like to add on to that is, I just spoke with Greg Gibson, a very well-known name here in Terre Haute. I spoke with him this morning, and there's a possibility that you might become a potential partner in my business. He just bought B&amp;B Foods recently, and he has contracts with about ninety percent of the restaurants here in Terre Haute from that business. And he's pretty excited about maybe the idea of us teaming up together on that. So that's been an opportunity that I wouldn't have had without this program.
I was just gonna ask, I mean, looking through your slideshow, your networking opportunities, I mean, you guys were meeting with the people you need to meet with to advance whatever you wanted to after high school. Does something stand out? I mean, I would assume this conversation with Greg this morning really stands out for you, but an opportunity through this program that you feel you wouldn't have had otherwise that stands out for you for your future plans? Any special event, a phone conversation? It doesn't have to be anything that was on the slideshow, but just something that stands out for you?
I would say that the networking CEO is absolutely insane. Because we do get to meet people that we never think we would meet. I mean, honestly, if I wasn't CEO, I wouldn't be sitting here right now talking to you guys. So it's definitely something that, it's unexpected. I mean, when I joined the program, I knew we were gonna meet people and such, but I didn't know there was gonna be that many people. It's even hard to catch up with names because of so many people that we meet. I mean, at the Riley Conference, we went to Indianapolis, it was right at the beginning of the school year. And we got to talk to a lot of ISU students. Some of us didn't want to go to ISU, some of us just wanted to look around. And I mean, at the Riley Conference, we got to talk to so many people in so many different businesses, got to ask so many questions that like, some of those questions were what made me want to start my business as fast as possible. I mean, it was like so much opportunity that I just, that I just got overloaded with, that I wanted to make it happen. So it was definitely, networking with CEO was definitely amazing.
Awesome.
Thank you. And I just want to add one thing personally. I've lived in Terre Haute my whole life, and being in the education realm, I knew all the folks that I needed to know in education, but I really didn't know the community like I know now. And I would drive my businesses, and I seen that place, you know, forever. But I didn't know what they did, I didn't know who ran it, I didn't know that. A lot of the resources that are here in our community, again, I didn't know that either. The ISBC and the Chamber of Commerce and all these. It's just not something that an English teacher in middle school necessarily needed. But now that I'm doing these things with the CEO of students, I'm really appreciating and getting to know my community in a way that I've not before. And I'm just absolutely thrilled to do this, so. Not only do I get to see them, but I get to put them in connection with the right people, so.
Gentlemen, anything you want to share?
Something else that this class actually helped me out a lot, and anyone else that joins into it, is if you were struggling with like, speaking out about something. For me, I couldn't do public speaking. If you told me to do this at the beginning of the year, I wouldn't do it. Now I'm comfortable enough to where I can just tell you all guys about my business and all that. But it does help you get out of your shell and just open up to like, new opportunities that I don't think anything in class would have taught me.
That has been a consistent theme we've now heard two years in a row.
Yeah, going off of that, I've known Gabe here since we were just little kids in kindergarten. We both went to Hoosier Prairie together. And I remember the days back when him and I were saying we were gonna be the best men at each other's weddings in kindergarten. So I've truly seen this kid grow. And it's taken many years for him to become the great young man he is now. But this year, just this program really, the mature level and everything else, I feel like I've seen him just go from this year to just way bigger. Something that I never thought I would truly see from Gabe. And I think everybody else would truly agree that Gabe just blossomed. And it was out of nowhere. It was, we had to do a class business. And Gabe just went from this shy, quiet kid to, "I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it." And he just volunteered for everything, always had his hand in something. And I don't know that we would have gotten where we did in that business if it wasn't for Gabe here. And I speak for everybody when I say that we all just grew as people. And the mature levels and the friendships that we have now is something that honestly, one day when I have kids, I'll probably talk about this program. Especially if things go big for my business. Yeah, no, this program though, is something that I wish every high school student had the opportunity to be a part of. And it's sad that not everyone does. But I'm very, very blessed for the opportunity to have it. And once again, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity and accepting this and letting us take the time out of our school day to go and do something like this. Because I don't know if I would have made it through senior year if I had to sit in class for those extra two hours.
I think that's a good one to end on. But before we do so, Terry, if you could just remind us, or any of you can just remind us, what does CEO stand for for those people who are watching either the archive video or watching live tonight who don't know what CEO stands for?
It stands for creating entrepreneurial opportunities. And what we do is we set up opportunities. I drop them in front of the students and I say, "Go." And unlike being a teacher for all those years, my role is to not be up in front. My role is to just start them with something and see what they do with it. Win, lose, fail, succeed, it's an opportunity.
Thank you for illustrating the things that we're trying to get done to allow people to apply what they learn in the core foundational classes, so that they can go out and use it. And we have many of those opportunities, and we have desires and dreams to be able to increase those things. So thank you for coming in and talking about one of those programs here tonight.
Can we just, I have one last question. When do the kids apply for the upcoming school year and how does that work? So has that already happened for next school year?
It has. We started talking to them and we went to the high schools, went and visited them, did a presentation to them. The students each got up and talked about a different part of CEO. It was in November, then they applied, the window to apply opened up. It was reopened up in January, just to allow a couple more of the opportunity. It closed, and then we offered for the students who made it through the application process, experienced CEO days. So they were able to go on business trips with us to see what it's like, what we do, and so that's how it went.
Awesome, thank you.
You also meet, is it seven AM? Well, how early do you meet?
Last year it was seven.
Okay.
Now it's seven thirty to nine.
Okay. I knew it was before the normal school day started for everyone else, so definitely a commitment as well.
It is, and it's every day.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Yeah, I actually have a question. What are some of the criteria for the students to get picked? Well, I'll be honest, I'm not on that selection committee.
Okay.
They could answer the questions better than I can as far as what the application asks of them. I don't even see it.
The application process consists into almost, it's a paragraph that you have to write, but it's a really long paragraph that you have to write. And you have to write about yourself, why you would be a good fit for the class, and why you're interested in it and such. And then throughout the application process, there are some surveys that they would send you to answer, and some steps through Midland. And one of those steps is like, you have to have two recommendations, either from coaches, teachers and such. And there's a couple other things, but it's really, they really are looking at what you're saying on your paragraph to see if you're actually thriving towards the class.
Well, I just have to say, I know a little bit about the program. Just, you had met last year at the Children's Museum, which I'm also an employee. And I think it's great that you have such a great partnership with our community businesses. I'm assuming that kind of partnership still went forward this year where you would have the opportunity to meet other businesses, and they would host you, and just those connections. I'm just really proud of the direction this program is going, and I just hope to continue to see it thrive. So thank you so much. And please come back anytime you want, share what you're doing. I'd love to hear what happens with that phone call, but I'm excited for you. Thank you guys so much.
And please feel free, if you would like to join us, just let me know ahead of time, we can arrange for you to come and go with us on one of these business visits. It's really interesting.
Wonderful, I would love that, yes, thank you. Anything you guys want to share? Are we good? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
You guys are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but if you have other commitments you need to do to go out, you're welcome to leave at any time. So don't feel obligated you have to stay. At this time, we have our first call for citizen comments, and these will be on agenda items only. And I do not have anyone signed up for that at the moment. So we will move on to our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second that.
We have a motion and second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or abstain? We are now ready for our new business. The Personnel Report Professional Leave Request, Mr. Michael Cox.
That's a tough act to follow.
Yes.
Sorry to get my glasses out.
Don't take your time.
Your name and administration request approval of Personnel Professional Leave Request is presented this evening with an addendum that will be added, that outlines a program. I'd like to read that program to you guys and answer any questions that you might have at the end of that. Educational Assistant Pathway, teaching of apprentice program with Ivy Tech Community College. We are partnering with Ivy Tech Community College to create an educational opportunity for our current educational assistants. This apprenticeship includes a workplace, this partnership includes a workplace apprenticeship. The Educational Assistant Pathway partnership with Ivy Tech Community College offers our organization a valuable opportunity to develop our own educators. This collaboration would enable a cohort, up to eighteen educational assistants, to pursue a post-secondary education while remaining employed with our schools. The program is designed to allow participants to earn an associate's degree within two years, with a pathway to complete their bachelor's degree through an established partnership with Western Governors University in a collaboration with Ivy Tech Community College. Additionally, discussions are ongoing with Indiana State University to be recognized as a partner in addition to the one Ivy Tech already has established with Western Governors University. As a part of the Workplace Apprenticeship Program, employers must approve wage increase associated with achieving milestones for completion of advanced educational opportunity. Proposed wage incentive structure for program cohort, if approved, to support encourage staff members pursuing a career in education, complying with workplace apprentices requirements, the following hourly wage incentives are proposed, based on key milestones achieved within the approved elementary or secondary education program. At this time, this wage recommendation applies to only participants within this program. At the end of year one, milestone earn a technical certificate in elementary education, an incentive would be twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five cents.
Twenty. That's not, I retract that from that. Simply delete that one. Incentive of twenty-five cent additional hourly wage at the end of year one. At the end of year two, earn an associate degree in elementary education, an incentive of fifty cents additional hourly wage. At the end of year three, beginning of year four, complete all requirements to be eligible for student teaching, an incentive of fifty cent additional wage requirement. In completion of the program, milestone earn a bachelor's degree in elementary or secondary education, eligible for Indiana teacher license, an additional fifty cents would apply to the hourly wage. Post-program certification, milestone earn an Indiana teacher license, incentive twenty-five. So a total of two dollars over that timeframe. And we would have a teacher that has gone through our program with Ivy Tech, Western Governors University, and hopefully Indiana State. And we'd have our own, grow our own teachers. And our hourly educational assistants would be able to continue working during the day for supporting us and be able to complete their program after that. And we'd be happy to take any additional questions that you might have.
Could we do a motion for approval in a second before we open for questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel and professional leave request with the addendum as presented.
Second.
We have a motion second, are there any questions?
Did you say there was room for eighteen?
Up to eighteen for this cohort. And that would apply to any of our educational assistants at this point in time that we'd be looking for.
So the idea would be then for it to be like a five-year trajectory? Is that what I was hearing? They would start through the program and then, you know?
Actually, about four years.
Actually, it'd be at their pace. Yep.
Okay. And if they're slower than that, are they still in the program?
And they would be completing this as they are working as well?
Yes, during the day, they would be reporting to us, doing their duties for us. And then after school hours, they would be able to.
So in an education degree, there are certain things that they have to demonstrate that they've got experience at. The apprenticeship program allows their work experience to apply towards those, so that they don't have to quit their job in order to go and do those experiences.
Those observation hours, they would be doing it on duty.
How does that work once they get to the student teaching portion?
The student teaching portion is one that we would have to work out with Indiana State. That is the one section that they may not be able to continue with their employment. We have to work through that piece of it. And it's new enough to us that we will cross that bridge in about four years when we get there.
And when do applications for this program open? Or, I mean, is it an application process?
It will be an application process. And while we're out doing visits, I've already kind of planted some seeds with our principals.
So they can help identify?
Upon approval tonight, this is the last piece to be able to fit all the requirements of the workplace apprenticeship. Ivy Tech is prepared to begin informing people, and they'll go through their normal application process that you do to get accepted into Ivy Tech. The reason why for the limit of eighteen is because of the first cohort. We want to make sure it's a good experience and that we learn from that. But we also want enough students so that if some of them choose not to continue, we don't drop below the number that prevents Ivy Tech from offering the program. So obviously, colleges and universities have a minimum number to accept, to offer a program. So we're increasing the numbers so that we have, increase our chances of staying above that minimum. But also make it small enough that we can learn from this first cohort and make sure it's as good of an experience as we can as we're learning about how to implement it.
Exciting.
That's great.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the Personnel Report and Professional Leave Request along with the addendum presented this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstain? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the April Accounts Payable Docket, Mrs. Donna Wilson.
Good evening. The Board Finance Me- Meeting, the Board Finance Committee meeting was held last Thursday evening and we reviewed the Accounts Payable Packet, the Docket as included in your Board Packet this evening. There was one member of the public in attendance at that meeting, uh, the following items were pulled for further review. Constellation New Energy, uh, there were three payments totaling a hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seven cents. And that's for natural gas for multiple school locations paid from the operations fund utility budgets. Constellation buys and transports gas through Center Point Energy's infrastructure. Uh, we participate in the Smart Portfolio Program that provides the district savings by proactively managing fluctuations in natural gas pricing and we buy some of those, some of that gas at a fixed price and some at market rate. Uh, Curlin Bu- Curlin Bus Sales, two payments totaling five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, that was one fourteen-passenger white bus that was ni- ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and three seventy-eight passenger buses, which were forty-eight, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, twenty-one dollars. Uh, these buses were ordered in February of twenty-four and were paid for from the operations fund. As a port to point that out, we still, um, are awaiting liquidation of that purchase order, we haven't got all our buses from last year. Novell Electronic Devices Designs, um, eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we purchased twenty-two ten-player buzzer systems for the math and reading competitions held recently. Uh, that was to replace some aging systems that was paid from Title IV grant. Riverside Technologies nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven fifty. Uh, we purchased thirty-five Chromebooks and they were used with the Teacher Chromebook Evaluation Committee that was paid from the Education Fund. Stock Solutions LLC two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. Uh, that was for the twelve Open Gate Metal Detector Units, so that bid was awarded earlier this year. Uh, bags for the units are still on backorder, so we will have another, um, expenditure off that purchase order. Uh, those units were purchased from Homeland Security Grant Funds coupled with Geo Bond Funds. Kentucky Mud Works a thousand, fifty-four fifty. Uh, we bought thirty fifty-pound boxes of white earthenware clay and that was to u- be used in the stockroom to replenish our inventory for art classes. Uh, so we bought that from the Operations Fund Budget and then it's backcharged to the school art budgets as consumed. Frytag Weinhardt seven hundred and three thousand, twenty-seven eighty. That was pay applications thirteen through sixteen for the twenty-three mechanical improvement projects, um, projects that were down across the district. That had been delayed because of supply chain issues, so that equipment now has come in and I believe we only have, uh, two, uh, liquidate retainage on that. That was paid from Geo Bond Funds. Acorn Distributors Inc. twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three eighty-eight, that was cust- custodial products and again, that's used in the stockroom and paid out the Operations Fund Budget, um, for warehouse supplies and then subsequently backcharged to school custodial accounts as she used. Midwest Transit Equipment forty thousand, forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents, bus repair parts and replacement parts and service for the month of March, that was paid from the Operations Fund. And Essential Education Corp. two thousand, fifty-three twelve, and that was complete study programs, that's license renewals for both the GED and TAVE Academy. And TAVE is Test of Adult Basic Education. And that was paid from the Adult Ed Grant. Uh, Mr. Berger did ask us a couple of questions about food service and the average monthly expenses and those are between six hundred and fifty and seven hundred thousand dollars monthly and last year in twenty-four, uh, those expenses of school lunch totaled just over eight million dollars. Uh, we also spoke to Tom Lentis about your question, Mr. Berger, about food and dairy product waste. And, uh, we did talk a little bit at the meeting, but we buy for each cafeteria about mu- a weekly uh, to eliminate, uh, or mitigate any excess of product. But Mr. Lentis, according to Mr. Lentis, we use several, uh, organizations, not-for-profits in the community. Food Rescue that distributes to a lot of different not-for-profits. Lighthouse Mission, Bethany House, Soaring Eagle Food Pantry, Fourteenth and Chestnut, et cetera, all those organizations and then more. He said some of the neighborhood schools have their organizations and that primarily occurs around break times or holiday periods when they s- have, they ramp up for, you know, um, and have more inventory and then we have breaks and obviously they don't want that waste. They do not don't, uh, dedicate anything that's outdated, but that would be prepared food and also supplies that they fear uh, will run out of the expiration date and so they get, ask those organizations, uh, to come in and get those. I also reached out to Mr. Creason and Mr. Pitts and they will be providing an update later about our diesel fuel purchasing program as we have had a diesel fuel contract and they're currently exploring other options. Um, I hope that answers all the questions you may have. Um, if everything meets your approval, then I ask for approval on the April Accounts Payable Docket.
I'll make a motion to approve the April Accounts Payable Docket as presented.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Donna, I really appreciate you reaching out when we have questions like that, you're jolly on the spot with that, so thank you and we support that.
Well, and thank you to the people that I've reached out to.
I see, my question is, I think it's good and to share with the community that how we, you know, the wa- we don't have much waste and look at the money we spend for food and wh- how we look at buying diesel fuel for the buses, so thank you.
And I showed you that invoice from Prairie Farms for the month, I mean, it's quite, because we get four invoices, about four invoices for each school, so there's.
Yeah, I like for the, the minutes to show too, we had this meeting at six o'clock, so anyone from the public, we had one. Uh, we're doing that because we want to be sure we're accessible to the community, so thank you.
Well, at this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the Accounts Payable Docket, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstaining. Thank you. Next, we are moving on to our second reading on policies, Dr. Hensel.
Please note that the following policies are being presented for second reading. Also a reminder that there is no action on second reading, this is just to make the public aware. Um, A two eighty-five, no distracted driving policy, this is a new one that is now re- being required, this is not one that we've had in the past. Um, C four hundred, use of restraint and seclusion. C four twenty-five, student suicide prevention and awareness. D two seventy-five, drug-free workplace. D three seventy-five, employee discipline. D four twenty-five, employee benefits. And G three hundred, latchkey programs. As a reminder, um, we switched from Neola, um, Policies, um, Service to our church, church hit on Antrim to provide our policies. So we are going through every single policy, that's why there's a number of them on a regular basis when we do this work. Um, each of these policies that I just read off were presented for first reading at the April thirteenth meeting of the Policy Committee. There were no community members present at this meeting of the Policy Committee. The purpose of the second reading is to make members of the Board of Trustees and our community aware that these policies are being reviewed for potential revision. If anyone has any suggestions or questions about these policies that have been presented for second reading, please forward them to a member of the Policy Committee or to me. And the P- Policy Committee is Amy Lor, Stacy Killian and Carrie LaBella.
Um, I'll also share just with that meeting, we have a, a different kind of agenda, I mean, similar to what we have here, but we allow public comment at those meetings as well if public are in attendance. Um, we want to be as transparent as possible, um, for you to view the work of the board and to, just to see what we do as an, an off-committee of the, the school board as a whole. Um, it's good work, so thank you. Um, moving on to third reading of policies, this is the, the next step after, after second reading, it comes back to the Policy Committee, Dr. Hensel.
And these will require action of the board. I recommend approval of the policies presented into respective packets for third reading. At the April thirteenth meeting of the Policy Committee, there were no community members present at this meeting of the Policy Committee. Each of the presented policies were reviewed by members of the Policy Committee and agreement was reached to present them for consideration to the Board of School Trustees. Previously, each of these policies were presented for first reading during a meeting of the Policy Committee and they were presented for second reading during the March third meeting of the Board of School Trustees. Since their presentation for first and second readings, questions that have been raised have been investigated and answered. The policies are, as presented this evening for third reading have been reviewed and supported by our legal counsel. The other policies that were presented at the March third meeting of the Board of Trustees for second reading continue to be reviewed by members of the Policy Committee. The reason they are not being recommended for approval this evening is because we are seeking clarification of questions that have been asked or we are awaiting responses from our legal counsel to ensure that members of the Policy Committee fully understand the recommended wording of the policies before we recommend them to this entire body. To summarize, I recommend approval of the policies presented for third reason, reading. They are B one hundred, Board Authority and Philosophy. C one hundred, Entrance Age Requirements. C three fifty, Student Discipline. C four seventy-five, School Sponsored Publications and Productions. G two twenty-five, Vehicle Island. G three twenty-five, Free Reduced Price Meals. G four seventy-five, Prohibition of Unmanned Aircraft or Drones. I can respond to any questions that a board member might have at this time.
Um, we need to go ahead and take a motion for approval in a second and then we'll open for conversation. Um, but also these policies are live on our website, correct?
Yes.
I will move to approve the policies put forward for third reading as listed by Dr. Hensel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions or discussion?
I think it's important to note also when we meet for Policy Committee, a lot of the discussion also hinges on, you know, what's happened in the legislative session, what do we need to wait until we know exactly what, you know, fallout is from that? And, uh, you know, and again, reviewing with legal counsel and making sure everybody understands it, but, um, I really appreciate the work that's done there, it's, uh, really detail-oriented. Um, and, um, I think really the core work of the board, so I appreciate the attention to that.
This committee is the epitome of in the weeds.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will have a motion in a second to approve those policies listed in third reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstaining.
Thank you for that.
Now we are moving on to co- comments and correspondence, the second call for citizen comments, I have one, Dr. Mary Howard. She would like to speak on diversity. Welcome this evening, um, we have three minutes and you've done this before, so.
I'll give the time, but I'll know.
Miss Katie in the back?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for listening to comments tonight, uh, good evening, Superintendent and President and Board Members. So I'm representing the Terre Hope team this evening, we just have a few things we want to share, um, with you all this evening. Uh, we, we, uh, had a great meeting with Superintendent Hensel a few weeks ago and one of the things that we shared with him was the fact that we will be, uh, providing him with contacts uh, with in- of individuals who are at historically black colleges and universities to help with the recruitment of minoritized students who are finishing their degrees at these, um, institutions. We have individuals in our community who have some really, it had not only family members who work at those institutions, but who have graduated from the, some of those schools, so we, we promised, uh, Dr. Hensel that we will be sharing some contacts with him. Uh, we are also, also still concerned about the, uh, the black and minoritized teachers who, uh, come to our community. We're concerned that there's, uh, you know, whether or not there's a retention strategy for, um, the teachers and, and the staff. We'd like to let you all know that we are more than happy, we'd be more than happy to provide some type of, uh, orientation, well, not an orientation, but maybe perhaps a welcome, uh, type of activity for individuals who come to, come to the community to let them know that, uh, we support them and that there's a sense of belonging. Uh, we also have a suggestion that if, if there is a, a minoritized candidate who comes in for an interview, we would, we would absolutely love to host some kind of reception or something, if, if that's allowable. And we had another question, um, we, we don't know about rules or policies, so we just wanted to know whether or not it would be allowable to host a reception for minoritized employees. I, I don't think we can get like a list, and I, I don't know if that's allowable or not, I don't, okay, you said.
That's probably something we need to talk about afterwards when I can also looks.
You got it. You got it, thank you, Superintendent. Okay, so we'd love to host a reception. We're also hoping to host a listening session for athletes, particularly minoritized athletes who are, uh, who are in our school system sometime this fall. Couple of other things, we, we, we would like to get an update on the, uh, on the, on the position that, um, the, uh, Dr. McClendon had vacated a few months ago. Was wondering if we could get an update on that and be informed. We, you know, when I was listening earlier, there, there's a really, there was a really great report about Ivy Tech Community College in collaboration with Indiana State. One of the things on our list was to work with the, the schools and the colleges in the area, so, uh, check that, that's great, we, we can commend you on that. And, um, uh, Superintendent, at, at some point in time, we were hoping that we could hear, um, a vision from you what, what's happened in the, what's happened this past year and what you hope to happen in the future. We'd like to, we're, we're always e- excited to hear from you and to get a sense of how we can collaborate and, and, uh, build better and stronger together. So, did I hit the three minutes, am I good?
Yes.
Okay, right, okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
At this time, we are moving on to information from the Superintendent and Board Members.
Yeah, I want to, um, obviously we've got, it's spring, there's lots of things to celebrate. Um, it's show week for the cast of the Unsinkable Molly Brown at the Terre Hope North High School. Tickets are still on sale if you are interested in coming to this Friday's, Saturday's or Sunday's show. Um, tickets can be purchased during the school day or at the door for, before showtime. As a reminder, um, Terre Hope North High School has wanted a very small select number of schools across the country to receive a grant, um, to be able to perform, um, the Unsinkable Molly Brown, um, this coming, this school year. Congratulations to South's academic Super Bowl teams who competed at the regional at Greencastle High School. Each South team placed in the top three of the Class One Division and the English team qualified for their third consecutive year of the state championship, which will take place at Purdue University on Saturday, May tenth. Congratulations to the Terre Hope South Latin students who competed in the last Invitational of the school year over the weekend at Homestead High School in Fort Wayne. The intermediate team took first place and the novice team came in seventh. The county swim meet was hosted this past week, this is for the middle schoolers at the Beagle County Aquatic Center. Congratulations to each of our middle school and high school swimmers on a great season. We have also recently been told that the Golden Apple winner was recently announced. We are thrilled to congratulate Mrs. Lindsay Eaton on her WTHI Golden Apple Award win. Mrs. Eaton was surprised with the honor on this, or this past Friday and we will be hosting, or posting on social media after it airs on WTHI. And a special thank you to our bus drivers and the entire transportation department. Last week was Bus Driver Appreciation Day and it was celebrated throughout our, throughout the district and all of our schools. There is a recap video showcasing the different spirit days and other celebrations and I assume that that is on social media. So for those of you who have things that happened in the school and you're wondering why you weren't announced today, um, it's because these people made us aware of these different celebrations. Any of our people at our school, if you know of something special that our students or teachers have accomplished, please forward it to Katie Shane so that we can be able to include it on social media or here during our board meetings. Thank you.
Anything from other board members?
Um, I, I'll just share that, um, Stacy and I and Dr. Hensel, um, got to hear from the earthlings that presented last meeting, um, their full presentation, um, and they did a wonderful job and it was very well researched and we got to have a back and forth about ideas um, to maybe be a little more sustainable in the school district and ideas that they can take back to their school and kind of be leaders in that way. So I was excited to hear from them and their parents, so.
Well, I think they also, uh, Tom Lentis had also joined us and some of the questions or maybe barriers in pursuing what they'd like to do, um, we were, we were giving them that information that they may not have been aware of, so I think it was a really great conversation and so anyone that would like to, you know, if you don't have enough time here but would like to meet with some of us, please invite us to do so, we're happy to try to accommodate that. Um, I just want to remind us, we're starting May at the end of this week and. Um, I just want to remind us, we're starting May at the end of this week, and that means graduation time and a lot of end-of-year celebrations, so, um, just as a mom a- of a senior, uh, be safe out there, enjoy your time, um, but I hope everyone enjoys those celebrations, and if there's anything you'd like the board to try to attend, don't hesitate to reach out, we'll do our best to do, at least have a representative there. But thank you for all the work that you do in supporting our kids.
Michael, how many we got retiring then, May thirteenth, we have the dinner, how many?
Around forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we have forty-five openings. Maybe, maybe, maybe. We'll, we'll find somewhere for someone, right? Is there anything else? Wonderful. Already planning. Okay, our future meeting will be Monday, May nineteenth, here in the Administration Office Conference Center, starting at six P.M. Um, hope to see you there. If there's nothing else, um, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.